Hello, everybody. How you doing? It's so good to see everybody. We like to try to always start on time. Come on in, sir. All right, first let me ask, where is the sign up sheet?
Right here.
Okay, so we're gonna keep your calendar right there, so when the people coming in, they can sign, okay? Anyway, good to see y'all today and so forth and all and everything. Okay, I'll take it out of my pocket. Um, this is talk of two, so we have it every third Tuesday of the month. We like to give people a chance to ask questions about things going on in the city, tell y'all what's going on in the city, and we can see what we can do if I can make the city of Valdosta much better. As always, we like to start with a prayer. And I'm looking for a deacon, I'm looking for the pastor. Raise your hand. Pastor Jennifer?
Missionary.
What about you, Jennifer? Okay. We got Mr. George Ryan to go give us a prayer?
Yes.
Go ahead, you do it.
Come on, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our council lady and the other representatives of the city and county. I wish God to bless this nation, bless the concerned citizens that are here. Bless those that are not here and don't even know what's going on. Thank God for them too. We ask you that some of the accomplices mean that we don't give us our families and communities this way, for goodness sake.
As always, I like to say, we're gonna always talk about vote. I want everybody to vote. That's the talk for today, okay? Everybody vote. All right, today... Today, what we really do want y'all here to talk about, we have someone, I'm introducing from Georgia Power. He's gonna give us some good information that I think we need to know, because I'm finding out a lot of people have not heard anything about it, was very much not aware. And right here, we're gonna introduce Mr. Joe Brown. He is the man at Georgia Power. And he gonna give us some information to tell us. We gonna find out some information about it and help keep it down. So, uh, right now, he's gonna tell us about this program and everything that's going on, and we gonna see who can qualify, who's eligible for it. So let's, let him have a good spill and talk on it.
First off, I want to thank y'all for having me.
Thank you for coming.
And I also want y'all to know, we, we know everybody's feeling the pain of high bills. It's been unusually hot summer, and we have gone up. Some of the things we're doing should start putting downward pressure on rates, the two nuclear units that just came online. We're, we're thinking this next year, it don't sound like much, but we're thinking next year to put a $3 per customer downward pressure on rates. But as much as it's, if it's your $3, it's your $3, right? So, feeling the pain of high bills, our folks went to the Public Service Commission and asked them to help us with, with folks with low income. So what, what they've done, you know, it's always in the past been, it had to be 65 and low income. But they changed it now, it's just low income, and there's three other categories that will qualify. And if, if you're not in the situation, I bet you know somebody that is. But the three things that will qualify you for the discount, and it's $33.50 a month, which is real money. That's a, that's almost a tank of gas. The first one is if you, if you receive supplemental security income, SSI, you qualify. The second is if you are on social security disability, you qualify. The third is if you have a HUD housing voucher, Section 8 housing, which Hudson Dock in Orly West, all that qualifies. So if you live and got the voucher, you don't have to be 65 or anything, you qualify. And the fourth one is kind of a, this one's a little complicated, but it's the, the income eligibility. If you're, if you, if it's a single house, one person in the household, and you make less than $30,120, you qualify. And it goes up to, it goes up about $10,000 for each person in the household. So a two-person household is $40,880 a year, or $3,400 a month. And like I say, it goes up about $10,000 for each person in, in the household. So, the way you apply for that is, I sent Ms. Tulia a link that she can share with you. Or you can go, when you get your bill online, I mean, in the mail, it'll, it'll have information in there that just started. It wasn't in there last month, it's in there now. And you can sign up like that. Or go to, I don't know how many of you are online, uh, I know half of my family, they don't have computers. But if you do, you can go to the Georgia Power site, and it's IQD, Income Qualified Discount. That's all you gotta know, and you can drill down and get, get to it. But it's $33.50 a month. This year, and it's gonna be a three-year program, a three-year signup program. This year, they're not doing verification. They wanted to move quick, so they're not gonna be checking up, they're not gonna make you show them your HUD certificate, or EW2, or any of that. If you say you qualified, you qualify. But next year, you will have to, have to document that you qualified. And like I say, a three-year program. They're thinking 32,000 people a year for three years. That sounds like a lot of folks, but y'all in Metro Atlanta, there's a lot more people up there than there are in Valdosta. So, I'm, I'm not sure in the first year that there would be a cutoff if they got to 32,000. But as soon as you get your opportunity to sign up...
That's what I hope, 32,000, that's what I hope to take?
Yeah. 32,000 a year for the next three years. So, 96,000 people. And it's IQD, Income Qualified Discount. Yeah, I guess the easy way to remember though, if you live in, in Hudson Dock or Orly West, you qualify. And when you get to the side, it'll ask, the first thing it'll ask you, are you a Georgia Power customer? You wouldn't be on there if you wasn't. So you just click that box, and the next one takes you to the three categories. You choose one of those, those three, or four. And that's, that's all there is to it. And the next month, you'll get the discount on your bill. Y'all got any questions or...
Yes, you said, "I'm a bill, and go to Georgia Power."
Well, I doubt, I don't know if you guys seen, see it, I sent you an email with a link.
Mm-hmm, with this one?
That's it.
That's it, and I have...
That's it, but that QR code is not working. It just started not working today. But it, the...
That's what we were looking at.
So hold on a sec. You have a mailing list there?
Mm, we can get a mailing list. They put their names, they signed their names when they came in. I guess I can't get a mailing list, get one started?
Well, I can give you the, you can go to this address.
Did any of y'all bring the flyer? I gave a few flyers out. Did anyone bring that flyer with them? Yeah. That's, that's one, and I know it's on...
The easy, the easy way to do it, but it's not working today, is that QR code.
Okay.
They're working on it. Hopefully, they'll have it fixed overnight, but that, that link is there.
And I was gonna try to get a bunch of, print it off for y'all to have it.
Well, that's, that, so the QR code quit working. I mean, we're, we got people in Tifton doing the same thing tonight.
Did y'all got that information? Go online for that, y'all. Go online, y'all got that?
Yes.
Georgiapower.com.
The QR code is being worked.
Don't have the, uh...
Pray out.
Uh-huh, don't have the marketing. I'm gonna put it on Facebook. This is on Facebook too, if they trying to go and look on my story. And I'm just putting it out there for you. I'm gonna have it down at the community house as well, have this posted as well, so you can get the information and know about that. Because to show your eligibility, you gotta have, you got, they got to do this QR code first and...
No, that's just one way to get to it, to answer the questions, or you can go to that, that link right there.
That link down there. So when you answer the questions, and I understand that you said, they really just, pretty much anybody who apply right now?
Yeah, I mean, it's the honor system on the income.
Okay, but it's gonna, yeah, but they do, I'm, they're gonna ask you about your age.
But they, they'll start off and ask you, are you a Georgia Power customer? And then, when you get to that, that site, that, that address there, they'll start off, are you a Georgia Power customer? When you click that, and says yes, then you click the next, take you to the next one. And it'll say, are you 65 years of age or older? Receive Social Security Disability Insurance? Receive supplemental security income? Or participate in federal housing choice voucher, Section 8 housing? Any one of those that you can click, you qualify.
And we are strongly advising, you know, everybody to try to go ahead and apply. If you have a family member who really does not use a computer much, y'all, we need to help them. Uh, you know, I would say get them in, get them in touch with me. But y'all need to help them, so we can let them know about this. Say what now? Yeah, we can set it together.
It doesn't take three minutes, once you get to the site. Uh, my, my neighbor did it, her husband was, passed away, she's on Social Security Disability, and in four minutes, she was there. If you had a question...
I'd say the, what if people not build it if you listen?
What if we not work?
I'm not good, you listen if you listen.
You can call the number, but that's gonna be a cumbersome problem. If you've got a friend or a relative that you can ask to just get you on line with.
Wait a minute, just a minute, just a minute, y'all. We got a question. Come on, just a minute.
Is it just only Social Security Disability? What if you just, um, rebel Social Security?
Well, then, if your income, if you're 65 and your income is below that threshold, and this, well, this is the new kind of way to go right now. Some of this stuff probably isn't...
Y'all get your questions now, ask them.
30,000 a year for one person in, in a home. And if it's two people, it goes up about 10. Three people goes up another 10, so it... It's a pretty generous program for them.
All your information, um... Is all your information filled in?
I don't, I don't understand. I'm not following the question.
I guess you got, put it on there.
Because you know, like, from Georgia Power, like, you gotta feel how real that information is. I think that's maybe...
If, if you have an email address and get email from Georgia Power, once you click in it, how's your... And it'll pick your cell phone up too, if you, if you put that up. Look, somebody 10 years old here, but you don't even know they all work here.
My mother's bill was in my late twenties. She died in October. But she continues to pay the bill. She would qualify, and so do these options, but...
Would he?
The bill is in his name.
Would he qualify? I wouldn't get into, get every, I'd let a little time, I'd go ahead and get on it, and let a little time pass for next year. The, the goal of this thing is not, is to help people. It's not to try to do, get you anything.
Oh, so you gotta redo it every year? I mean, you don't get a...
Now, after next year, it will, because next year, you'll have to prove that you, that you...
Next year is time?
Uh, next May.
Next May.
It, this program started May 23rd, but it was, when they didn't get the information out to the regions till about a week ago. And, and just so y'all, y'all know, nothing would make me happier than all 32,000 slots come from this neck of the woods. So out there, you can get, help, help your neighbor, help your family, whoever.
So there's 32,000 just for a house, for like a house of that size?
Every state.
For the whole state? 32,000 for the state?
Yeah, over three years, 32,000 years, three years.
32,000 each year?
So it's right at a 96,000. We got too many, but, but I don't know how many would qualify. But... You know, if you live in Atlanta, everything costs more, but everybody makes more, so a lot of them would qualify. I'll re-clip them off.
All right, y'all, we need y'all to be quiet for a minute, please. I need you to come up, be quiet, and you can find out what else can do here. So there's, that's $35, that's not gonna interfere? Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, we can't hear you. Can y'all please be quiet? Okay, come on, question?
Like, that $35 you say a month?
It's 33, 33.
33, because it does not go interfere with the money like getting coastal claims somebody else wants to hear.
No, it'll, your bill will just be 33.50 left. There'll be a line item on there that says, uh, IQD, Income Qualified Discount.
So what you're saying is, when they get their bill every month, that 33.50 will already be deducted.
Right.
And so whatever y'all tell coastal claim, that's the less, you know, less the 33.50. I understand that part? It's already gonna, okay, go ahead.
Okay, like, with my bill, I already got money there, you know, for my bill credit. So if y'all owe me 33, and whatever I owe, I'm gonna take out the rest, out the money that I already have there?
That you put, you paid extra amount a month on, for your bill?
No, no. What I'm saying, when the government gives us that free money, I still have money on my bill that pays money.
Okay.
So I'm asking, you know, with the $33 that they...
So you gotta, you gotta balance sitting with us?
I got credit already, yeah.
It, it won't impact anything other than what you owe the next month, it'll be 33.50 left. Social Security Disability, SSI income, Section 8 housing, and if your income is, is less than what's on this sheet here. What that, what that amount is...
30,000.
That, that's for just one person. Uh-huh. If there's two in the household, it goes up, uh-huh. So if, that, what that number represents, that's 200% of the federal poverty level. So if you're at 200% of the federal poverty level or less, you qualify.
Be quiet, y'all, please. Come on.
If, if you're in Section 8 housing, you don't have to worry about it. You can make it on a thousand dollars a year, ain't no way you'll check.
Right now, everybody in here can get, everybody is. Like, everybody here gets, because he said, "Both of them are California." So you want to get in that top of, everybody gets ready. You just got to open that, and do it.
I'd get some fix things, you know, you know, I mean, you know how they are on computers.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, about that number too.
Yes, we have plenty of young people can help y'all with this and so forth. We weren't trying to get y'all to be made aware of it, so you know what's out there, so you can have it. And I'm asking everybody, please, go ahead and use it, at least try and find out if you can do it. Because it's gonna be a help to you, okay?
It works out, I think it's $402 a year.
That's good. Yeah, that's gonna help a lot. And the way things are going right now, it's... Any more questions? Before y'all can talk like you want to?
If I could save a dollar, I'll save a hundred dollars.
And now, Blay, that's how it should be with our people.
And, and, you know, everybody's not in this meeting. Help your neighbors, friends, family.
Any more questions?
I'm calling Mr. Brown. This goes in effect starting today, or...
It started May 23rd.
So it started May 23rd?
It, it did, but the info had not rolled out. I mean, the, the Public Service Commission approved it May 23rd.
If you on prepaid lights, it'll help too.
Prepaid? It'll, is, whatever your bill is, is gonna be, uh, 33.50 left.
It will help everybody. If your bill is $35 a month, guess what? All you gonna pay is $2 a month for, at least a year. Well, when they get it, they just have to figure it out. That's a good question, though. She said, uh, some people pay every week, they, uh, the prepaid is every week.
I'm gonna make sure, I'm gonna get an answer right now, but, uh, I'm gonna get...
Say what now?
Whether we give the wait a flight, or do it, or we just go on, um, Georgia Power?
Okay, I'll give it to you again. You got a pencil? Okay, the, the, it is georgiapower.com/energiediscount. Forward slash, forward slash, energy discount.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, uh, we about to be wrapping it up. Unless, if anybody else got any more questions or anything you wanna ask?
I'm ready, I got my pride going, I work this. I work at 6:00 every morning. Thank you for having me, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm trying to give you some questions, honey.
Did I have anybody ask for a question? It's not, we are getting ready to, uh, wrap it up. Glad you all came. We got this information. I'm gonna have the information, uh, down at my community house. Or you can call me. But I want y'all to pass the word on as well, please, y'all, so you can get use of. Wait, I know, my bill is high too. I'm trying to see which one of these categories that I fit in. But I think I can fit in one of them. I'm gonna try for it myself, we'll see. All right, thank y'all for coming. All right, now, we do have new refreshments in the back if you want something. Thank you for coming, and we are here every third Tuesday. Every third Tuesday of the month, at 5:00, we have all kinds of interesting information. And we are dismissed. Thank you to no one. Every third Tuesday.
All right, this is the part where we have our citizens to be heard. A portion of these, we ask that you come forward, state your name and address, so that we may have that board director, our policy requirements, that you say unexcrements, so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole, and do not attempt to engage individual members of the council in debate. It is the council's policy to follow through with you on your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council, designate one spokesperson to represent the group of their confidence, and their comments. Again, this will ensure that others have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard?
Yes, I'm George Boss, line 5004 Oak Drive, I live across the Georgia. May and council, we have two radio stations, 105.9 FM and 92.1, that, that is concerned to some citizens in Valdosta. Not only the black community, but the white community. I was called by a white individual, and he's a professor from VCU. And he asked, he didn't ask me for my assistance, but after he explained to me what it was, I had no other alternative but to lend my hand. Things on the Morning Drive Show, and you all visit, frequent that program. You use terms that offend many blacks and white, white people as well. I'm gonna quote a few of these things that we hear daily. The KKK has been misrepresented. They help blacks, blacks were in the Klan. Joe Biden, I skipped that one, I'm just political, I don't wanna get into that one. Another one is, uh, they need a white man's month because they have a gay pride month. Black people are stupid voters. They don't want white people playing basketball. Basketball is a black... Basketball is for black folk, black folk don't want white people playing the game. You can hit us every morning, or something close there too, one oh five point, yeah, one, one oh five point nine FM, Black Pro Media. I have sent each of you all my presentation, I've done five videos, I sent them to you all, and to the county commissioners. Uh, baseball is for blacks only, in that, uh, they talk about turning the flag upside down in justification to prove their point about how America's fallen or down because of certain people, certain Americans. They talk about N double A C P was founded by four white guys, and they go much deeper than that, I'm not mentioning what they be saying. But that's very offensive, and I just can imagine how outsider would view Valdosta in Lyles County when they hear all of this venom, and then you all sit on that station. I can't understand it. People ask.
Sorry, when the slave trade was going on early, I'm talking about early in the slave trade, these slaves were first brought over here to work in the factories in the north. They found out they, they were too dumb to work in, in the factories. Yeah, and the Free Black Klan, the Free Black Klan has been made out to be something that it really wasn't. They weren't, uh, they, 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 uh, they tarred and feathered, they enforced with more whites than they did blacks. It was amazing, but the money they gave to black universities, black hospitals, brought up, took food to blacks' homes and burnt down, um, just all kind of things, and I've got a couple pictures of it.
One more thing, about the, uh, black sports, that they saying now that, uh, baseball is for black people and brown people, that black people got no business there, they're not getting up anymore.
All right, interesting perspective.
Later on.
Later on. Yeah? You have any idea who founded the N double A C P?
I, I don't off the top of my head, no.
Ah, didn't need it. Four white guys. Four liberal socialists founded the N double A C P. And, you know, but it's the thing is, when you, when you do the backstory about a lot of this, it, it, uh, it really changes things.
When the Civil War, I'm sorry, when the slave trade was going on early, I'm talking about early in the slave trade, these slaves were first brought over here to work in the factories in the north. They found out they, they were too dumb to work in, in the factories. I'm, I'm not being, you know, disparaging, I'm telling you, and they found out they couldn't work in there, so they said, look, we'll work them in the south like animals, that's about all we can do. Y'all, listen, white people are special. I don't give a crap what people say, we're special, we came up with every invention that, that, known to man, that helps mankind.
No, I, I wait a minute, there's some people, there's black people that'll come up with great inventions too, that have, have made our life better.
Um, it's like, you gotta come up with them.
Uh, George Washington Carver, uh, this.
I knew that was coming, I knew that was coming.
Okay, okay, I mean, that's the easy one, that's the easy one to go to, but there are others too.
Point is, no other peoples in the world ever helped their neighbor except white people, think about this, y'all.
No, no, I, I gotta differ with you on that, I, I.
Good, yeah, we need a cult, we need a cult of like rednecks, good, honest people, you know?
Oh goodness, probably do.
Super D, man, it's awesome to hear from you today, have a great weekend.
Offensive, and I just can imagine how outsider would view Valdosta in Lyles County when they hear all of this venom, and then you all sit on that station. I can't understand it. People are asking me the same question, they hit me up on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, and my website. Why do you all do that? Also talking about queers are not dangerous. When the transvestites get mad, they kill stuff, the Democrats. Black lesbians hate black men, and queers that promote the crazy lifestyle, perverted display. Black reparations getting to go to college in America, and not in Africa. And they need to stop talking about reparations. Slaves were brought to this country to work in the factories in the north, but they were too dumb, black folk were too dumb. And that's why they put them in the fields in the south. That is very distasteful, and I think somebody at least oughta let them do it, if they don't, y'all, please stop visiting that channel. Thank y'all very much.